The meeting for February 10, 2015 of the North Kingstown School Committee is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Haley, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Avanzato?
Here.
Mr. Blasberg?
Here.
Mrs. Clarkin?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Held? Student representative?
Reorganization of the school committee. Can I have a motion to elect a chairman? Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Clarkin. I make a motion to appoint Mrs. Clarkin as the chair of the school committee.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Can I have a motion to elect a vice chairman?
Mrs. Avanzato?
I'd like to offer a motion for Mr. Blasberg for vice chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Mrs. Haley, can you please recite the calendar?
Monday, February 16th is President's Day. Schools and offices are closed. Monday, February 16th through Friday, February 20th, winter recess, schools are closed. Tuesday, February 24th, school committee business meeting, 7:00 PM at North Kingstown High School. Thursday, March 4th, a CILLAC meeting from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the central administration building.
Thank you. I just want to remind, if anyone wants to make a comment during Citizens Comments, you need to sign up or so that we can call your name to come up and speak, otherwise we won't call you. Dr. O'Jay, do you have presentations?
Yes, I'd like to start tonight by, you know, word of congratulations to the North Kingstown School Department Facilities Subcommittee. Thank you to Mr. Grundy and the whole team for their fabulous work, and I'd like Mrs. King to talk a little bit about the letter that is in your packet this evening.
There's a letter in your packet tonight that was put together by the majority of the Facility Subcommittee and approved by all the members of the committee. You'll see the names. There are some committee members that were part of the committee and are no longer here and some new members, but basically this memo, this letter covers the work of this committee since 2010. And I think we need to remember, this is a volunteer committee, and I know that when I first started here in May of 2012, we did not have a facilities director or a facility supervisor, and this is a very large district for that. And I remember reaching out to this committee practically on a daily basis with issues in the facilities and especially to the chair of the committee, who's Jim Grundy, and he's here. And I would like to ask Jim Grundy and Cliff Seaberry, who are part of the committee, to come up to the mic if they could. We had a couple of other members that are unable to attend, but I would like them to come up, come forward. Come on, guys, don't be shy, because I know you're not. And this group is always there to help. We have a great group of people. Jim is the owner of Atlantic Control Systems, which is a very successful heating ventilation company. Mr. Seaberry is a retired electrical tradesperson, so his knowledge is invaluable. We have Briarly Mellor, who's also in the electrical trades. We have David Caldwell on the committee, who's a general contractor. Just the members of the committee have given so effort, so selfishly, selflessly of their time that it really is unbelievable, and I really, really have to thank Mr. Grundy. I think I called the guy. He must have wanted to run out, run every time he saw my name come up on his cellphone for the first several months I was here. So as you can see from the letter, there have been a lot of things that they have been involved in, and their input has saved money for the district or prevented money being wasted for the district. And they're still heavily involved. At any time we need to have meetings, they're involved. They're involved with all of our RIDE submittals, all of those approvals. Any project that we really need them to look at, they're always available for that. Phil Bergeron from the town DPW is also on this committee, and his assistance to the school department I found invaluable over the three years that I've been here. So do you guys have anything you'd like to say?
I think you've done a wonderful job saying it all.
I'd like to say something. Mrs. Avanzato?
I just want to add, you know, my thanks. I think a lot of members of the public might not realize the time and effort that this members of this committee have put into their work purely volunteer, and it's just, it's really helpful to this district and to Mary, as she said, and we can't thank you enough for all your great work. I think you've saved the district a lot of money, and you've made our buildings safer, and so, thank you.
Just to echo again, these folks are all professionals. They're experts in their field, and yet they find the time to volunteer their time and their expertise for the benefit of the district and our taxpayers. And anyone who takes a look at the agenda packet tonight can take a look at the letter that details the amazing amount of money that has been saved or avoided, some pitfalls that we could have fallen into that the recommendations of the Facility Subcommittee have really helped us get through, and I want to thank you all.
Thanks. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we now have a special education presentation?
Being, you know, as we are entering budget time, I think this is a good time of year to have Dr. Bezulo talk to us a little bit about, you know, the makeup of special education in the district and some of the issues that we're currently working with. So, Dr. Bezulo, without any further ado. And Mrs. Terry as well, sorry about that.
Yes. Thank you.
So, when you open your packet, on the right-hand side, I'm going to direct your attention to the left-hand side. And you'll see a little introduction of Dr. Bezulo and Mrs. Terry.
Dr. Bezulo, if you could use the microphone, even if you have to carry it with you?
Well, could we move the microphone over here for her?
Careful.
Oh, yeah, at the last. Well, we can hear you, but the audience might not be able to, or the audio. Thank you. Is this better?
Much better.
Yes. All right. So all I have to do is remember to use it. The second page is the table of contents, so to speak, and it's what is in your packet. And we're going to talk about variables, different variables, that are inherent in special education. We will be looking at disability by school, and there are pie charts to give you a nice picture of what that may look like. In essence, it's the special ed picture in every school in the district. We will look at poverty by school, and that becomes very important because that has an impact on what happens in special education. We have to think of readiness, we have to think of rate of learning, we have to think of acquisition of skills, and we have to think of the time it takes for mastery of those skills. And all of this will impact special education, special ed identification, and the services and programs in our school. That's why the poverty numbers become very important for us. We're going to look at the kneecap results, and I know kneecap is in the past, and I also know that PARC is coming, okay? But I think it's important to know what special ed looked like compared to regular education over multiple years. What was the trend? And surprisingly, but not surprisingly, okay, the gap between regular ed achievement and special ed achievement remains persistent and consistent, and it's a very hard, it's a very hard variable to close because it is so complex, and it's still with us. I am going to be very interested in what happens with PARC to take a look at what that picture is like, but it is something that we deal with all the time, continuously, constantly. It is part of the conversation I have with principals, one way or the other, with teachers, for sure. I'm in and out of the schools. I see teachers, some of them almost daily, okay? So the achievement of the children is a very, very prominent piece and a very prominent topic in our conversations. We'll look at, once we look at all the data, what is the impression? What's the preliminary impression, okay? First off, what is it that we're seeing and what comes to mind? Because those types of impressions move our conversations and direct what we will be doing, direct what we may do, direct what we think we need to do, and once again, it is ongoing, always ongoing. Special education, especially the numbers for special education, can vary day to day. Tomorrow, we may have a family move into the district, and our numbers would go up. A team may meet, and things have been successful for a child, and numbers will be reduced, and that happens constantly. So the numbers you will see tonight are numbers that I like to call them dynamic because they move so much, they're not stable, and that's a good thing. So we'll look at trends in changing needs. We'll talk a little bit about the next RIDE visit, the school support team visit. It's coming in 2016, and give you like an overview of what they will be looking at. And then we'll look at the specialized programs that we have in the district that are important for all of our students, not just our students in special education. The variables to keep in mind, you have to look at each school and look at the heterogeneity of the disabilities, the range of disabilities in our schools, and you'll see a difference in the schools when we look at the representation of disabilities in those schools. You will clearly notice a difference. The pre-K impact across the grade span. We currently have about 80 children, 80, 85 children in our pre-K program. Folks find that surprising, and they also find it surprising that the children begin at three years old, actually, they come to us at three years old. And some of these children have very complex needs, and we're going to be working with those children very closely and very intensely, almost through all of their years of school. So the pre-K and children in our pre-K program do have an impact, not only for Fish and Cove, because once they finish in Fish and Cove, they go to their home schools. So the impact is going to be felt throughout the district. The poverty level, of course, as I mentioned a moment ago, has an impact on our school resources because we have to look at readiness, we have to look at the needs of the children, and what it means in terms of resource allocation, and then, of course, the persistent and consistent performance differences. So this nice little tidy chart gives you an overview of the different schools, and it gives you the percentage of children with disabilities in each of the schools, and most importantly, at the bottom, you will see that totally we have 523 children identified as having a disability in our schools. Now, as I said, that may change tomorrow, so don't call me that, okay? Total special ed children served in district, 479, and that means that we service 92% of our children in district, and I think that's wonderful, okay? I like to keep our kids home. Out of district placements, 28, 28 children, and that represents about 5%. Now, you may ask, who are these children that are placed out of district? Sometimes it's not, it's not us that would place the child out of district, it could be DCYF involvement that would be placing the child out of district, and that's something totally out of our control, but it is something that we work with, DCYF and the families, as well as the agencies that are serving these children. And then we have 16 children who are parentally placed. These may be children in parochial schools, charter schools where the parent has chosen to place their child outside of the district. That represents about 3% of that population.
Fish and Cove. Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the reasons across the top, I can, I think I could guess most of them, but I don't want to presume that I know what every single one means.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it, but.
I'll lay them for you.
No, I just, I don't know if there's a.
I think that's important, and I should have gotten the definitions, but I didn't, but I will get them to you.
Ready, Kathy? Okay. Autism spectrum disorder. Blind visually impaired. Emotionally disturbed. Hearing impaired. Other health impaired. Learning disabled. Autistic disability. Speech language. And traumatic brain injury. Now, under each of these broad regulations has a number of subcategories, and I will make sure you folks get that. I can make copies of it and download it and make sure you have that. So when we look at Fish and Cove School, we're looking at, clearly, we're looking at quite a range of disabilities in Fish and Cove School. Children identified as having a disability are 27% of the school enrollment, okay? And I've included pre-K in that. And you can clearly see that speech and language and developmentally delayed are the two major areas. Children coming into the preschool program, the pre-kindergarten program, almost, almost 100%, it's because of speech language delays and speech language difficulty. Developmentally delayed, those are children that may have delays in other areas. They may have delays in cognitive development, social emotional development, they may have delays in their physical growth mode development, so they would need the attention of a physical therapist. They may have delays in what we call sensory integration, so they may need the attention of an occupational therapist. And clearly, you can see, those are the two major areas, okay? When we say speech language, it's not just articulation, it could very well be language processing, okay? Rate of processing, and it could very well maybe central auditory processing. At this young age, when they come in at a young age, we're not sure. We watch that child. Developmental delay is kind of a tricky category because it comes into play at a young age, and at age nine, at age nine, the team has to make a decision. Developmental delay can no longer continue after age nine as a label. It doesn't mean a disability goes away, but what the team has to do then is really examine the progress, the achievement, the test results, and they have to begin to say, okay, is this really a learning disability? Is this really a language-based disability, okay? Is this a cognitive disability? So at age nine, there's some very, very difficult decisions to be made for those children who come to us and carry the label of developmental delay, and the teams, the team has to look at a number of different pieces and make the change in the eligibility. Dr. Bezulo? I just have one quick question. Under the Fish and Cove, you included the pre-K. Do you know what percentage that is of the overall total? Is it a high, is it a lower percentage of pre-K, or is it? Well, within these numbers, what percentage is pre-K in the Fish and Cove? About 80, of the 325, about 80 children pre-K. And not all of those children have a disability because we have integrated preschool, preschool classes, so maybe 45, 50 children. I'm just curious to see that number, yes? Mr. Jones?
So just, so I think I'm clear on this. So, but the Fish and Cove numbers include the K through 2 clinical day program, right? So those are students that geographically might be in other schools, but they're at Fish and Cove because of this, right? So just the fact that that's at 27% really is masking that there are kids who might have gone to other elementary schools, but because of this identified need, they're at Fish and Cove to address that need. So it's a little, the numbers, the percentages mask the actual distribution across the school, the individual school boundaries?
Right. And the same is true for the pre-K program. Because the pre-K program is a different program. All children at the pre-K level go to Fish and Cove School.
Okay, so that's what sort of makes the 27% seem, because it looks like an outlier if you didn't have the.
And so I guess the next best question is, how many children are in the CDP program?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Okay.
Approximately.
Approximately six or seven.
Okay.
How many of them are Fish and Cove students?
That's not pertinent to the larger points here, so.
Okay, Dr., probably all but four.
Dr. Bezulo, microphone, please.
All but three or four.
Okay.
It may change, don't hope we didn't. These are slippery numbers. Forest Park, the next chart is Forest Park, and you can see 16% of the school enrollment is comprised of children who identify as having a disability, and not surprisingly, speech and language, learning disabled, developmentally disabled are major categories. Really more evenly distributed and not as varied as you find in Fish and Cove. Hamilton, 12% of the enrollment in Hamilton are children with disabilities, and once again, we're looking at the same pattern, and this is not unusual. Speech and language comprise a large portion, developmentally delayed comprises a large portion, and so does learning disabled. And that's pretty typical. The next chart is Quinn, and 13% of the population is identified as having a disability. And again, we're seeing learning disabled, 13 should be speech and language, it's an error there, it should be speech and language, but we're seeing, again, the same three major areas, learning disabled, speech and language, and developmentally delayed. Stony Lane, 12% of Stony Lane's population is identified as having a disability, and again, we're seeing learning disabled, 13 should be speech and language, it's an error there, it should be speech and language, but we're seeing, again, the same three major areas, learning disabled, speech and language, and developmentally delayed. Stony Lane, 12% of Stony Lane's population is identified as having a disability, and here we see quite a difference because speech and language, children identified as having a speech and language disorder are really the major component of children with disabilities in Stony Lane. Now, let's think about that a moment. When we talk about children with speech and language disorders, we're not only talking articulation, that's, you know, everyone understands that, but we really are talking also, very importantly, about children who have language processing disorders. Now, that will eventually look like a learning disability, but it is a language-based learning disability, and that's something that is not, is different from a reading-based learning disability or a math-based learning disability. A language-based learning disability is a very, very pervasive type of disability because it'll affect all aspects of a child's learning. If a child is not processing the information, the child is not able to hear, well, not able to understand clearly what the teacher is saying, not able to follow what the teacher is saying, not able to interpret what the teacher is saying without some specialized instruction. That may mean pre-teaching, it may mean guided review, it may mean guided practice. So there has to be a real close relationship between the regular ed teacher and the special ed teacher to deal with children that have this type of a disability. In doing so, the amount of time that the child would need from a speech and language therapist really increases, and you can clearly see that this type of a disability really, it takes a lot of intense type of support and a lot of collaboration because the material that you're using, the way you present it, the way you organize it, the way you structure it, becomes very, very important, and that's going to be true for that child's whole school career all the way through. So it really is something that we have to watch very carefully, and we can't just assume that these children have a articulation disorder. You notice you don't see DD here, developmentally delayed here at all, because these children are not nine years old, they're beyond nine years old, and other decisions have a meaning. But clearly, learning disabled, speech and language are major areas. And that's not surprising.
A quick comment on that. I was surprised at the equality in the two middle schools in terms of the percentage. Obviously, there are more children at DMS that have disabilities, but percentage-wise, it looks like it breaks down to both 9% of school enrollment at each school. That's amazing. It's the same exact number for both middle schools.
When you talk of, when you talk of a disability, when you talk of a disability.
Dr. Bezulo, the microphone, please.
When you talk of a disability, like a learning disability, you have to really understand that even though a child may carry the same label, that can be expressed in many different ways. So you can have what I call sometimes garden variety learning disabled child, or you can have a child with a learning disability that is far from garden variety. It may be central auditory processing where they need augmentation of the teacher's spoken voice during instruction. So the complexity increases, and you're dealing with children too at a middle school level where the content, the learning content, the curriculum is going to increase. where the, the content, the, the learning content, the curriculum is going to increase. So you, you've got a lot of issues coming to play here. So when you look at Whitsford Middle and when you look at Davisville Middle, yes, you have learning disabled as a major disability in each of them, but they may be very, very different populations of children. At high school, nine percent at the high school, and again, what are we looking at? Learning disabled, other health impaired, that's typically ADD, ADHD is in that category. Emotionally disturbed children and autism. The next, next sheet is, Kathy, do you want to add anything to that? The next sheet is the poverty level, pre-reduced lunch, that's October first. And you can clearly see that Quiddnesset is a full title school, CY, with fifty-nine percent of the population receiving pre-reduced lunch. Fish and Cove has recently become a targeted assisted program of schools, and then Davisville Middle is eligible, and that involves a lot of discussion in terms of how do we serve Davisville Middle, what happens with Title I money for Davisville Middle. That, that's an ongoing conversation in terms of how, how those dollars are allocated to the different schools. The district average in October was twenty-five percent. Now, folks, let's look in another direction, okay? And we're going to see persistent and consistent performance differences in kneecap scores across the recent years. First one is the reading test, and I think it speaks very clearly, regular education students are along the top and special education students are along the bottom. You do have some variability. Something in eighth grade happened that was really good in 2010, but then it dropped off. It dropped off grade eleven, and the regular ed students improved even more in grade eleven. So this is the kind of difference, this is the kind of disparity that we look at all the time, sometimes scratching our heads, sometimes wondering, you know, what do we do? How do we break this? If I told you that this is a common picture across the state, probably across the country, you know, we all nod, yes, 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 but it doesn't help. You know, we want to change it. Knowing that others are in the same boat doesn't help. The only thing that does is, you know, let's see what others are doing, how are others attacking this, how are others addressing it? Let's see what we can do with it. Later on, I will give you some insight into what I think is going to be important to try to close that gap, try to change it. This is just the opposite of the previous page three, because these are students not proficient, students at a one and two level, and of course, the line on top is special ed, and the line at the bottom is regular ed. Now, first you have those who are proficient. Regular ed is on top, special ed is on the bottom. And then those that are not proficient. It's the obverse. Special ed on top, the higher number is not proficient, regular ed at the bottom. Now, this I find very interesting. The writing. I've never seen anything as parallel as that. I, I think it's beautiful, number one, but, you know, I just wish it weren't so beautiful. Regular ed students who are proficient versus special ed students who are proficient. And it really, it, it holds, it holds so consistently that you have to look at it and say, my gosh, you know, let's see if we can do something with this. What shall we do with it? And then, of course, the obverse, those students not achieving proficiency on the kneecap. And once again, it's a, it's a flip, the special ed students not proficient versus the regular ed students who are not proficient.
Five E in the. Yeah, it looks good yours. Just trying to figure something out.
Okay.
Number on here.
So let, let's just kind of look at, keep this data in mind, trying to say, okay. What do we do? The growing impact of the pre-K program, children come to us with more complex issues, development, behavior, social, emotional readiness oftentimes is not there. So we're, we're working with children who need a lot of development, who have a lot of developmental gaps, and we're working to close those gaps from a very early age. As I said, three years old, they come to us at three. They're adorable to see, you should visit the pre-K corridor someday, even when they're crying and screaming, they're still wonderful to see. Areas, of course, with the greatest demand, as we've seen, speech, language, LD, autism, other health impaired, that's pretty striking when we look at those pie charts. We kind of know where our services are needed and where our staff is needed. It is important to understand that children have the same disability label, can be quite different with respect to their individual needs, as I've described in the speech and language. Poverty, it, it places demands on school resources because of readiness, because of greater learning, because of skill mastery, the time it takes. And therefore, the variability in the poverty levels within our school has an impact on our supports, on our programs, in our, on our teachers. Differences among the schools with respect to the heterogeneity, there is clearly a difference in terms of elementary, middle, and high. We can see a school like Fish and Cove that covers almost the whole range of all the thirteen disabilities, and then we can look at a school like Whitford Middle that doesn't, has about half that in terms of representation. A school's heterogeneity in terms of the disabilities that it has within its walls in terms of how we have to service those children clearly speaks to the resources that are needed, the staff that's needed, the materials that are needed, and the time that the children need. And that's a major factor, a little bit, we'll see a little more about that. The persistent achievement gap in reading, math, and writing, what we do is try to look at children, we try to break that data down to an individual level, a class level, a grade level, and we have to look at curriculum as well. So not just look at the children, but we look at the curriculum. What is being taught versus what is being tested? Because there has to be alignment there. Other than that, the test is useless, right? I think the Renaissance Learning Program, I think STAR testing is really an invaluable tool, and I think this is what's going to give us the breakthrough in, in terms of how do we deal with that persistent gap. I think the STAR testing program will. I've seen teachers use it now, and they are using it efficiently, effectively, meaningfully. They are discussing its results. They are addressing a child's needs with that, with that testing. So I think that is going to be a terrific tool as we get to use it more and more. I, I think it's going to give us some answers in terms of what do we do because it allows us to look at an individual child without having to go through a lot of layers. Let's take this layer off, let's take that layer off. Once a child is tested, we have that test result in fifteen minutes, not months, fifteen minutes. So we know what's happening with that child, and we can make adjustments right then and there. To me, that is, that is just absolutely terrific. And then we have to look at the high school because all roads lead to Rome, and all of our students will end up at the high school. Now, we've numbered the four areas at the high school we're going to look at in a minute that I think are very exciting. Resource allocation, the implications for space, staff, service providers, support personnel, and service hours. If you have resource teachers at Quiddnesset and you have resource teachers at, say, Stony Lane, the service hours that those teachers put in can be very different because of the needs of the children. So a resource teacher in one school may carry a caseload of, say, fifteen, a resource teacher in another school may carry a caseload of fifteen, but the service hours that those children need are very different. And that's something that we track and look at on a regular basis. It's something that I talk to the principals about, and that, that gives us insight in terms of continuing needs, changing needs, do we add services, do we contract services? And what are, what are, what are our programs? What do, what do the services, services and what do the disability heterogeneity tell us about programs that we may need for children? And what is it looking like? And just recently, over the past year, because of conversations with teachers and principals, we're, we're in the early stages of putting together a new program for some children K to five that I think is very exciting, and the need is there. We've seen it, we've watched it, and now we're able to, to bring that information forward about those children, and we're able to do something that will make a difference, hopefully. So we look to the resources. Should they expand? And if so, where? Should they contract? If so, where? What are the changes? And we have to look at that consistently, we have to look at that on a regular basis in an open conversation with, an open conversation.
We just have to wrap up very soon.
All right, no, sorry. Okay. An open conversation with principals and teachers, and it's ongoing, okay? More good news, Ryder's going to visit us in the fifteen, sixteen school year, and they will come and they will look at compliance, they will look at programs and operations, services, staffing, and they will talk to parents, faculty, and get staff feedback. So thank you for that piece, the opportunity to share that piece of information with you. And we'll leave that with you. On the left-hand side, you've got two brochures, and these brochures describe and define the district programs that we have in place. These brochures are looked at by teachers and principals, and they are updated on a regular basis. And they are used to share information about programs with your parents and with staff so that fifth grade students know what's available, if they have questions about a child in the middle school, or eighth grade folks know what's available in the high school if they have children moving to the high school. And pre-K teachers know what's available in, in the home schools, in the home schools in the district, so they're thinking, okay, what school this child will need, how this child moves into kindergarten. So I leave that with you. Any questions? I couldn't make a good presentation. Kathy and I are available to answer any questions. A lot of information, it's not easy to collect and understand, and yes.
Mr. Jones was first.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bazulo, Mrs. Perry, for, for all this information. Don't, you don't have to answer this now, so maybe if we could just get through Dr. J a follow-up on the, the numbers chart. I'm just curious, on the forty-four that are out of district apparently placed, if you could come back exactly which, which institutions or schools that those forty-four represent? And maybe just a, on some of these, you know, I look at emotional ones, probably I understand, but I look at some others where we seem to have some proficiency in the district, like learning disabled and others, whether those are candidates for students who could come back or might be just as well-served in the district. So you don't have to answer that individually now, but just in, as a general.
Children is a true teacher because that's the question that we always, we ask each other, that's the, that's the conversation that we have all the time. Yes, I certainly could let you know what, what those schools are. Remember, some of those children are placed by DCYF.
Right, so maybe you can.
We wait till DCYF tells us what's going to happen.
But thank you.
Mrs. Evans, Adam?
You're welcome. Thank you. Yeah, just briefly, I just want to thank you. That was really, a really comprehensive review, and it, we've asked for this, and we've had it before, but this is even probably more information than we've ever had right in front of us in hard numbers, and we're always talking about special education, and it's a growing population. So it's important to devote the time to it and understand the facts as we do now. And we didn't know the breakdown last time we spoke, or we didn't have the breakdown of the different disabilities, which is, it's, it's just very enlightening to see and know what you guys are dealing with, and I think you're doing a, a great job, and you brought back a lot of students, I know, to the district, and probably continue to screen to see if there are more you can bring back, but sometimes you, you know, you can't if it's, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good presentation.
Thank you so much, Dr. Bazulo. This information is so thorough, and it's so helpful for us to understand, you know, the whole special education services within the district. Is there any way that we, this is such useful information, is there a way that we can have this posted to the website so that others can take advantage of? The visuals are fantastic, and I think it, it's really a nice and simplistic way of getting a great overview. So if we can get this up on the district website for others to see, I think that would be very helpful. So thank you again.
They have a meeting in March, I believe, fourth. And there's a company that's been with CUN and court principals as well, and, and the special ed faculty and staff.
Wonderful. Really good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call the office, okay?
So Dr. Humbert and Mrs. Perry are going to give us an Office of Family Learning presentation?
Thank you very much. In your packet, you have information on the Office of Family Learning. You have received this evening some additional information that we are asking you to consider. So we are giving this out this week so that we can place it on the agenda at our next school committee meeting for your consideration and vote. So what you see, first of all, is a letter from Mrs. Perry and me regarding the OFL Department and also the, basically the reorganization of the, and restructuring of the Office of Family Learning. And the reason for this is we lost two of our co-directors this past school year, one at the beginning of the school year and one again closer to November. And the Office of Family Learning has been struggling along with basically an interim person assuming the responsibilities. So we needed to formalize and restructure this. So Mrs. Perry and I have proposed a reorganization, and so on the second piece of literature that you have, we have the reorganization chart, where you'll see that Mrs. Perry is the Title I coordinator and overseeing the whole program. And we are, have written a job description for the Office of Family Learning Coordinator that you see on the right, and we are recommending Jackie Trainer for this position due to her expertise. She has been serving in the transition piece throughout this whole school year. So you, you see the job description of that position, and then following that, we have the pay increases that we are recommending and ask for your consideration for our next school committee meeting. In the, in the packet, you also have an explanation of the activities of the Office of Family Learning, and Mrs. Perry is going to share with. Learning, and Mrs. Perry is going to share with you some of the background of the office and their activities.
I can do it from here. I just wanted to draw your attention to, I believe it's on your left-hand, left-hand page of the packet, you'll see that you have the interim mid-year report for the Cozy Office that Jackie has submitted, and if you review that, that gives you a pretty detailed explanation of all of the activities that the O F L has done thus far in the school year. It looks like, looks like this, this packet right here. So, that will walk you through primarily the accomplishments that they've had up to this point, and then their goals for the remaining year from that grant. On that left-hand side, you'll also see, there's a brief summary of the O F L grant funds, the budget summaries of the major grants that the O F L oversees and runs. That's on your left-hand side as well. So, you'll see that there's the Hasbro Summer Learning Initiative that they just got reallocated for this upcoming summer as well, the Cozy Grant, the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center, and the McKinny Vento Grant on your left-hand side. And then on your right-hand side, what I've asked them to do is just provide you with some brochures and explanations of the major programs and services that they offer throughout the district, just for those of you who may not be familiar with the wide range of services that they provide to kids and families. So, you'll have a brochure on Blessings in a Backpack, which is offered at D M S, Quid, and Fission Gold this school year. You have information on parents as teachers. You have information on the child outreach screening process in the district that is overseen through that office as well. And then a number of specific activities. There's a book, an upcoming book group for parents. They've given you some samples of some one, one or multi-opportunity sessions for parents, coffee and conversation. And then you'll see in those smaller brochures, they've given you, I've given you a list of all of the after-school programs that have been run thus far at both Quid and D M S. And then, in the remaining list are, they have lunch with their children, there's those brochures. And then this year, they're offering one, one or brief enrichment sessions for students. So, you'll see those. Those start with Science Fair 101, an Electric Dough, and those are the, those are the ones that they've got coming in that are designed for enrichment opportunities for Quid students. And that is primarily what is on that side of the packet. If you have any questions, either you have to answer them now or when we come back in two weeks.
Ms. Evans-Ado?
Yeah, I'm trying to recall whether this is a change in how we've funded this previously in terms of having our special education assistant director be director, and I see that there's, I know there's a lot of grant funds involved with a lot of these programs. And I'm, and I'm just wondering about that. And I see, it says total grant amount, twenty-five thousand, but then on the bottom, it talks about the total budget being seven-hundred thousand for, I guess, all of the projects. Could you just expand on that a little bit?
Sure. In the past, the two co-directors were funded through grant funds, so they were not, it was not part of the assistant director's position, and it was not district-funded. When we looked at reallocating resources and services and programs, we realigned the proposal to you about how that would be operationalized, and it would result in the reduction of one F T E that will go back into those grant-funding sources for kids and for programming. So, that position, that grant-funded position will not be replaced with grant funds. We're not replacing those two people using grant money. Does that answer it, Linda? Does that? And that's...
I don't know. I'm gonna, this is, I'm gonna need time after this meeting to, like, look at some of this, because...
And then the, the reason that, you'll notice that on the bottom of your grant, on the O F L grant funds, you'll notice that they're not some, they're not summed up there. So, at the bottom, the total for the McKinny Vento is forty-one thousand, the Twenty-One Century is one-hundred-and-twenty thousand, the Cozy is twenty-five thousand, and the Hasbro Summer Learning Initiative is thirty thousand. And then the remaining grant funds for some of those programs that they oversee are through Title I and through I D E A. So, that's why it comes up to much more than what that is right now.
Thank you, Ms. Parkin. Curious, in looking at some of these things, like the book group for parents, do we ever employ video capture so we have this posted online so people can't make those, and we capture the goodness that comes out of those?
I don't know. I can follow up and see if they've ever thought of doing that, but certainly we can have that conversation. That's a great idea.
And it seems to me we should be building a video, like a YouTube library of all these good things.
Absolutely.
So, we don't either always have to repeat it, or we can reach wider audiences than those who maybe can't make it at the times that are prescribed.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
I'm curious on, when it talks here about the Rhode Island Early Learning and Development Standards, what, what age group is that? Is that the pre-K?
Pre-K and K.
And K. So, those are, so is the K updated to reflect Common Core expectations?
They're aligned, they overlap, and they make sure that they're enmeshed together, but they're, yes. So, they crosswalk them. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, the standards are really for the K predicated on full-day kindergarten?
Yes.
Okay. The, the improved data collection for the whole-child approach, I'm just curious, so, like, what data do we collect, and how is that disseminated and used?
So, for the Twenty-First Century Learning Grant, they are required to collect specific data that goes into a state data system. So, one of the data points is that each of the students enrolled in that program has to have thirty contacts during the school year, and then the state works with the district and tracks whether or not that, those data points, if they've reached that thirty, or those, they go thirty, sixty, ninety, they determine whether or not that has an impact on kids' attendance and their grades, so they try to make those correlations. We are working internally in the district as well to kind of get more real-time data to do that, and we've been working with the I T people to kind of have a link in our database so that we can track that without having the state turn that information back to us, because it takes them a while to do so. So, we've been kind of trying to do our own data collection as well.
Yeah, because my point was, the, thank you for, thing is, do we ever get anything valuable from the state back, or is it just a big sucking data collection that ends up just being, collecting data for data's sake?
We have not gotten the kind of data back that has been as helpful to us as we would like for those data points, and that's why we're trying to do a little bit more on our own.
Yeah, and this isn't, and this is not your issue, so, not trying to shoot the messenger, it's just the frustration that I think that parents and taxpayers should just be frustrated with is that the state collects, at least RIDE, a lot of data that ends up just being collected to be collected. It never translates into improving learning back in the districts. So, I'll get off my soapbox on that. But, thank you for confirming something that I thought was true in this area as well. And my final question is, so on the Hasbro, the summer thing, which I know is, you know, also says to sort of lessen summer learning loss, do we look at that in terms of really saying that's true? I mean, do we see those students having, you know, are we somehow measuring that in terms of validating that statement?
Yes. What they've done is pre- and post-for the summer session, and then they, with those students, then we look at them, once they're back in school, to see if they've maintained that growth from when, compared to some kids who did not go.
So, that's great, because that's my point, is either replicating that in some other ways, or taking the lessons that are learned from that if we can't get all students through programs like that, and at least sharing that. And I know we use the town rec department as partners, you know, this could be, again, something that we think of as a community effort and not just, you know, the school district. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Perry. You're welcome. Thank you. Please state your name and address when you come to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Shelley McDonald, sixty-seven Rose Hill Road. I'm a teacher here at North Kingston High School. I'm here again to address the school department about the Wi-Fi in our classrooms. As you know, there's an industrial-grade Wi-Fi router in every classroom in North Kingston School District. That was put in, or, yeah, that was put in due to the Wireless Classroom Initiative through RIDE. I'm here today on behalf of myself, my colleagues, and my students. I'm here because I have serious concerns for the health of my students. I would like to, there are a lot of reasons not to have Wi-Fi in the classroom, there are a lot of health risks. I'm going to talk to you about one tonight. Exposure to electromagnetic radiation has been shown to cause permeability to the blood-brain barrier. It's not something that's, you know, up for debate. It's a scientific fact. It's been proven. I can share with you the studies, and I can put you in touch with the doctors. So, permeability of the blood-brain barrier essentially means that when you're exposed to electromagnetic radiation, toxins from your blood, your blood essentially leaks into your brain. So, your, your brain is leaking, and what happens is that the toxins from your blood end up in your brain, and they can accumulate over time. So, you can imagine a kindergartner now in our Wi-Fi classrooms who comes up through all the grades, up through grade twelve, is going to have that much time of accumulation of toxins from our classroom environments. And that happens to everyone, regardless of whether or not you feel the symptoms. It happens to everyone. It would happen to you, it happens to me, it happens to my colleagues, and it happens to my students. And that can affect their health. It will affect their health. Now, some students and some teachers and some staff will experience symptoms. They will feel dizzy, they will feel like they can't concentrate, they'll have anxiety, they won't be able to sleep at night, they'll have heart arrhythmias, they'll have headaches. I know, I experienced quite a few of those, and I have to wonder, are some of my homebound students who can't come in because of chronic headaches, chronic anxiety, are they out because they can't come into my classroom anymore because of the Wi-Fi? Are my students at the end of the day who can't stay after school to get extra help because they have a headache at the, every day, is that because of the Wi-Fi? I don't know. But I do know that it's something that we should address. It's not something that we should ignore, it's something that needs to be acknowledged by the school department. And I'm more than happy to provide you with any study that you want. I'm more than happy to put you in touch with the experts. I mean, I'm happy to put you in touch with the doctors, but I think that it's something that can't be ignored anymore. I've been speaking on this issue for over a year now, and I want this school department, or I would like this school department to acknowledge it. I'd like the school department to provide a safe place, a learning environment for students, a safe place for staff to go to work. I would like a place to do my job that is not, that is not full of electromagnetic radiation, that is not full of a Class II-B carcinogen. Does anyone have any questions that I could answer right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Panic?
My name is Nicole Panic, and my address is sixty-nine Sassovas Road. I'm speaking for a number of students and parents in North Kingston. A few of us are here tonight, but many more wanted to come. We are aware that the German program is being cut from the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen program of studies, specifically the German One class. And we urge you to reconsider this decision. We know that only three languages are required at North Kingston High School, and German has had the lowest numbers in the past, but we think that there is still reason to keep the program. The mission statement of North Kingston High School Department is to educate our students to become intellectually active adults, to inspire them to reach individual excellence, and to challenge them to become responsible members of society. That is exactly what the German program is trying to do. We have a partnership school in Durin, Germany, which allows students from both schools to visit each other and to explore each other's cultures and experiences. This is an invaluable transatlantic opportunity that most schools, none of the other public schools in Rhode Island can offer. And to cut the program means that there won't be any, there won't be any more students who enroll in the program, and it will be lost. There'll be no more exchange program, and I know several students who have told, have come up to me and said that their families moved to North Kingston specifically because of the exchange program. Additionally, with a third largest economy worldwide and is the number-one export nation, Germany is essential for any student who wants to become involved in international studies, international business, or engineering. The Department of Defense and U R I has come to us and made statements saying that, well, they've applauded our program and have the fact that our school has German. And I, excuse me. It also gives students valuable advancements on their applications for colleges. Several students at our school in particular have gotten scholarships and have gotten into colleges, specifically because of, they have been able to place German on their applications. Recently, the German Club also hosted a coffee lodge. This was just, this was an after-school meeting hosted by the German Club, where any student was allowed to come and speak about their international experiences and what they thought of the school systems in all the countries they've been to or lived in. Seventy-two percent of the students who came, which is nearly three-fourths of the students, they weren't German students, they were students who are taking an interest in our program and who wanted to join, who wanted, who came up to me and said they wanted to know what it was like to be in our program, who wanted to see if they could take German One next year. And that in itself is a huge example of why we need to keep the German running, that it's gaining momentum. We are aware that the funding, that their funding is limited, and that there are a lot of thing, important things in our school system that need to be funded as well. I know that kindergarten has been a big issue, and we need to fund that, as well as there's a need for a new, I've heard there's a need for a new administration building. However, we need to make, I would love if you could make room, we would love if you could make room for, for German in our program of studies and in our budget. It's a remarkable and unique program that so many of us have given our heart, put our hearts into, and we really, it's important to keep in our, in our school, for our students, and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much so.
Hi, I'm Ruth Ann Baker, and I am the president at forty-one Saga Avenue in North Kingston, and I am here just to celebrate my students being here. So, it's so cool. I get a chance, but the best thing that I do is to bring them to Germany, to our partner's school, where we are for three weeks, and they present their projects in German to students there. And of course, before that, in April, there'll be twenty of them here in our school, and our school is completely transformed when our exchangers are with us. It's remarkable. So, I'm here to thank you for listening, for supporting in the past. I remember school committee meetings that I've come to in nineteen ninety, I think, and it was a party, it was a celebration, it was Doug Roth who said, "Oh, but I, I used to be a Gaffer." I was a Gaffer from my school in New York. There are hundreds, eight hundred, more than eight hundred, I think that's the right number, high schools in the United States with Gap exchanges, and this program has been running since nineteen seventy-two. And, and so hundreds and hundreds of thousands of kids have helped build this amazing bridge, and we don't want to dismantle it. It's important to have a place where kids can experience international stuff that they can still recognize in, under this umbrella of protection from the school committee, community, the school committee, the school community, and also the families involved, because they'll have their own family in Germany. There will be a family to these people here in, in North Kingston. So, in April, what happens is twenty partners come So in April, what happens is 20 partners come to our community. We take them to New York, we bring them to our school, they follow us, they learn with us. It's amazing. Anything that we do to help them experience our culture just is magnified back at us when we, when we are in their community. So anyway, that is just a celebration. I just can't imagine North Kingston High School without this program. It's something that I know, as we mentioned, something like this in, in some of the after-school programs, kids said, "Well, wait, that can't be that there's going to be no German. We moved here for that." And I understand that Nicole has had that same conversation with some people. So as we work really hard to find places where we can get taxpayer money and get the tuition dollars from Jamestown and all those sorts of things, let's not cut off the roots from one of those exact programs that we need that's really pulling, pulling money into our community. And also, I wanted to change something from the standard times, because I know it's easy, it's really easy to make some mistakes looking at the German numbers, because I have 65 students, and that, and three classes, and I have 50 in the business class. So I am part-time in German, but part-time salary-wise, I'm full-time, absolutely, and more, as a German teacher. So you're getting, you're paying for your buck, at least, and then some. Anyway, that's not the point. The point is, in the, in the standard times of this last week, on Thursday, we heard about the student, the classes with eight and nine kids, and that just has never, I mean, it's been decades since that happened, and not on my watch. Those classes don't run. What happens is you have to turn the page, and you get from the junior class list, then there's the senior class list. So on days, it happens to all of us, on days when there are junior tests, you wind up having the German program, the German class may be canceled because they don't turn the page and say, "Oh, I have all of these seniors to meet, too." So they, they draft me for one of the proctors of the test, and I try to put my feet down, and usually I'm successful getting someone else to do that, so I can meet with my seniors at the time when the juniors are taking the test. Anyway, I have 15, which doesn't seem like maybe that many. It's ideal for advanced classes. I have 18 in Level 2. That's very much on par with the other languages. They have, they run classes with 18, 19, 20 for Level 2. So for the lack of two or three bodies, we're going to cut off the roots of this program that's so fabulous? I hope the answer is, I don't think so. I can't imagine that there is something else that you guys can do that's even more valuable than what we're doing right now. So especially since the Department of Defense came here specifically to say, "What languages do we want you to teach? Hey, did you know that we need more German? Yes, because Vienna is the espionage capital of the world." They can't legislate us to teach, to teach German, but they can say, "Yes, you guys in North Kingston, keep doing it." Who else is going to jump on the bandwagon? There are other initiatives. There's initiative that just came across my desk, it's called Generation Study Abroad. They're recruiting all these high school teachers as of this month to say, "Please teach your kids to be responsible and go study in Europe. You've got to do this," because we don't. We have almost a million kids coming into, from, who knows, in the United, in the world, coming to the United States to study, and only 200,000 or 300,000 of us do the same, and that's not right. We need to get more kids out there, and this is initiative that's going to, that has millions of dollars behind it and all sorts of sponsorship, et cetera. So it's a new initiative, along with the Department of Defense, and of course, we already know URI wants us. So there's lots of reasons why we need to stay put. We don't want to break this bridge we're building with Bergau. They don't know where else to go. They want to come here. They want to continue. And so I just wanted to share, too, something that crossed my desk really recently, and that's the national exams. So how are we doing nationally? Yes, we know we have the level, the top students in Rhode Island, so it's always going to say, kids can all, is right, "Oh, I was the best or the second-best or the third-best in Rhode Island in the national exam." But nationally, we've had six kids who have been able to score 89, or 90, or 95, or 99. Six kids! That's unbelievable. We're there. Let's keep it rolling. Thank you for your support, support. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. O'Jade?
Assistant for Superintendent's Comment.
Okay. Can I have a motion to seal the executive session meetings minutes of February 10, 2015?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. I can disclose that there were no votes taken in the executive session of February 10, 2015. Are there any items to be exempted from the consent agenda? Mrs. Avanzato?
I will, I just need to exempt, because I'm going to abstain, B1 and 2. So was it present?
Can I have a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda with the exception of B1 and B2?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Mrs. Avanzato?
I'm just going to abstain when you vote on, when you take the vote on the minutes. I'll make, I'll offer that motion to approve the budget meeting minutes of February 3rd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Tom, thank you. I just want to clarify, I asked Ms. Healy to make a, is this, is this the minutes I asked you to make a correction to?
Yes.
And is that now in the, these minutes?
The correction was made in the electronic packet.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion passes.
I'd like to offer another motion.
Mrs. Avanzato?
I would motion to approve B2, executive session minutes, February 3rd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Mrs. King, do you have anything to report for the 2014-15 school budget?
No.
Ask that we table 5C, prepare it for a later date.
I'm going to table 5C, the CIP Existing Bond Future Bond. That takes us to the superintendent's preliminary budget for FY '16.
As, you know, this is now the, the second point in our discussion that we have to, you know, discuss budget items. There have been a few questions from school committee members over the last week, and I appreciate that. Hopefully, you've received the information that you need. If there's any other questions or concerns that you'd wish to raise tonight, that is what this item is on the agenda for.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clarkin. And I appreciate the superintendent and Mrs. King and Dr. Humbert have provided some of that, and I know there's some more issues now that we've had a chance to start looking into it. At the last meeting, I sort of made a comment about the, the budget timelines, and I want to follow up on that. I think, you know, part of this, given that our, our town audit is not complete for various reasons, which is generally helpful to have the completed audit and the management letter as we go into our budget process, given that there are still some evolving issues that, at least I know, and I think maybe other members of the committee would still like to discuss and get more data from the administration. I would like to make a motion to request the school committee clerk, with assistance from our legal counsel and Dr. O'Jaye, draft a letter for the chair signature to the chairman of the town council requesting a three-week extension on our submission of the FY '16 budget to the town council.
I'll second it for discussion.
Discussion? Mrs. Avanzato?
Oh, has this already been discussed with the council in terms of the charter?
I can tell you that I had a brief discussion with Mr. Embry about it. I guess my first comment would be, Mr. Jones, that that would take us to, it's due to the town, town manager, March 2nd, so you're saying three weeks from then, so that's pushing us to the end of March. The budget, the audit for FY '14 isn't going to be done by the end of March. It hasn't even started. So that, that's the first thing. The second thing is, I wonder what the impact would be on the backend of that. I just, I totally agree with you. It is a very, it's a, it's a tight timeframe. I know other districts struggle with the same thing, but in a lot of respects, I get concerned that at the end, if we're, if that pushes our information from the town, you know, being our property tax number that the town is going to allocate or appropriate to the school department, if that's also going to push that out three weeks, I'm just going to say that now you're talking late May, and then if there are any cuts that have to be made, you only have a few weeks to do so to get a budget in place by June 30th. And in the past, even with the timeframe that we're on, that has been difficult, that's been a struggle. So I just want to offer that as a comment, and not that I disagree with you, the timeline is very tight, I'm just concerned about the backend.
Mrs. Avanzato?
Thank you, Mrs. King, for that. I appreciate that information. Mary Anne, in terms of legality of that?
Well, I mean, the town council can, can certainly approve to give us three more weeks if they, if they so, if they deem it's possible. And I know that one of the reasons that, that they were having a problem with all the snow days and all the, all the meetings that have been missed, I don't think it hurts to ask. They can say yes, or they can say no, or they can compromise, so...
The only way it hurts is what Mrs. King just described. We'll, we'll be put in a bad position at the end of it on the other end. That's kind of, I'm a little concerned about that part of it.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I guess my concern is that, you know, the analysis that gets done either way gets done, sometimes it's better to get it done on the front end than the back end. And we know, given the other timelines of the municipal departments and their analysis, that sometimes the town council really doesn't end up digging into the school committee part until we get near the actual meeting and they ask that, and I know the last couple years it's been Dr. O'Jaye, that representatives from the school department come and talk to them in more detail. So I guess my feeling is, is slightly, that a slightly more analyzed and digested budget on the front end may help that process. I agree, three weeks is sort of an arbitrary number, maybe it should be more in time with when our meeting schedule is, and, and back off if, and I was kind of thinking, Mrs. King, from February 24th, when our, not, not the timeline from the town, but when our meeting schedule was, so maybe in effect, it's, it's two weeks from when the town deadline is due. So however, it needs to be tweaked, but maybe, maybe I'll amend my motion to say, request an appropriate extension based on our meeting schedule.
So the next school committee meeting after the 24th is March 10th. So if we fell in line with the way it is now, we would have a meeting on the February 24th for a vote to Mr. Embry the following Monday, March 2nd. So are you proposing then that we can get that to him on March 16th instead? So we would vote on March 10th?
Yes, that, that perhaps is a more accurate
Okay.
...description of what, what I was thinking.
Okay.
Proceedually, I think I need to withdraw my second, and then you need to withdraw your motion, and you need to amend your motion.
Just make a new motion.
Okay, I withdraw my second.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to, oh, I'll withdraw my motion and offer a new motion. The motion be to direct the clerk of the committee to draft a, a request with the assistance of legal counsel and the school superintendent for the chair of the school committee to send to the chair of the town council requesting that our FY '16 budget submission be delayed until March 16th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those, Mrs. Avanzato?
I just, very quickly, Mary, just so I double-check with you, are you comfortable with that?
I'm more comfortable with that than the three weeks, because I, I thought that at first, Mr. Jones meant three weeks, three weeks out to even look at the budget, to vote on the budget. So that really only pushes it two weeks to get to Mr. Embry, so I'm, I'm more comfortable with that than further down in March. That's what I was calculating in my head, that we were looking at late March, and that did make me nervous.
Okay.
I know that the council is having a similar issue with delay, worse than us, just timing-wise with delays in their own meetings, so it wouldn't surprise me if, if they're not pushed behind on their own schedules well.
The only thing that I would ask is that, you know, depending on, you know, we'll, we'll have this on the agenda clearly, but when we get closer to that meeting where we need to have a vote, if there are items that we hadn't discussed, or there are items that you are considering bringing forward to the committee for an addition or a cut, that you try to get that information to me before that March 10th meeting, so I can cross them out, so that we can have a number, because we, you know, we went through this last year. We have to vote on an exact bottom-line number. We can't have a range, or, or we can't, you know, Dr. O'Jaye can't be tasked with going back and, and cutting about X number of dollars. We really have to have a solid number. So if you can think of that, and any items that you want crossed it out, I'll be glad to do that, so then that way we can sit right here and calculate, and, and we'll have a number on the 10th.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Mr. Clarkin?
Mr. Jones has his word ahead.
Mr. Jones?
Oh, yes, thank you. At the last meeting, I also talked about charter schools, and the superintendent presented the impact, or at least the, the estimated budgeted impact of charter schools, and outlays out of the district to charter schools. As I've spoken about in the past, I'm concerned about some of the governance issues at these charter schools. I know, for example, that other districts such as Cherahoe have gone to RIDE and asked them to investigate that, and RIDE's been very slow to do that. I feel we have an obligation to our community, our taxpayers, and, and our students to ensure that those who are going to charter schools are going to ones that are in compliance fully with RIDE regulations. And given that for the two schools that send the bulk of our students to, there are at least some potential issues with that, I would make a motion that directs the superintendent in cooperation with our legal counsel to investigate filing appropriate legal or other remedies with the Rhode Island Department of Education concerning the Compass School and Kingston Hill as they see appropriate.
Second.
Mrs. Avanzato?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Jones for some of the work he's done on this issue. He gave all of us a handout, and it may have been prior to you being on the committee, Greg, but some information about the types of students that we see going to charter schools in North Kingston, and just the overall purpose of charter schools in general, which was intended originally, I believe, to be more for underprivileged kids who weren't given opportunities. And he, in his data, showed clearly in North Kingston, we have a lot of kids that are not in that category, and they're going to charter schools, and it's, the district is, we've said this a million times at meetings, but just to explain to the public that we're spending a lot of money on charter schools, and it's almost, at this point, like a dual public, dual public school system, where we have to fund both, and it's not for the underprivileged students. So that, I think this is a great motion. We, we need to take some action, because we've, we've been talking about this for years. So I'm definitely for that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little concerned, Mr. Jones, with the way you put the, the way you phrase the motion.
Okay.
Because, as you know, I mean, I just spoke in front of a commission in the legislature about issues that I feel with, you know, charter schools and the arrangements, particularly as they affect North Kingston. But I'd be, I'd be a little clearer in my charge if I understood specifically what it is you have in mind in terms of illegalities, as you expressed it.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Right now, you just said, "As I see appropriate." I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, if I use the term "illegalities." I meant, well, let me, let me perhaps amend my motion, and we can discuss it first before I amend it. My concern is that I believe there's, is clear evidence to say that, that at least two of the charter schools that we are sending the bulk of our students to are not fully in compliance with RIDE regulations, and we have an obligation to ensure our students who are attending those are attending schools that are in compliance. And I believe, given some of the weaknesses and the oversight that exists with charter schools, that we have an obligation to raise those concerns to RIDE and ask them to investigate as appropriate. So, perhaps that's maybe more the, knowing the intent, we can phrase it better. I, I will gladly do so, if, if that makes it clear what, what at least my intent is.
I'm, I'm fine. I just would probably be following up with you in terms of specific compliance issues as, as you see them.
I, I think Mr. Jones has made us aware of some of the compliance issues in the past, and I think it just takes a conversation at this point in terms of charter schools that are actually running deficits and charter schools that aren't sponsored, and those are required as part of statute. And if we're, if North Kingstown is spending all of this money to place children at these charter schools, then we need to make sure that RIDE is consistent with the regulations and follows through on the regulations. So, I, I am pretty clear with what Mr. Jones is asking us to do, and you and I can have a conversation at a later date.
Very good.
Mrs. Evansato? Can I just ask that the committee get a copy of it before it goes out to RIDE, please? The letter?
It'll basically be a letter asking for a hearing based on specific violations of the statute that certain charter schools are not following.
Very much.
And we'll be, I know Mr. Jones gave it to us to do, but we will be using Mr. Jones's information and the material that he's been able to collect in order to do that.
Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there any further discussion for this preliminary budget? Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.